Oh, three, and I am going to call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. We are going to start, we have several agendas to go through tonight, and we are going to start with our public hearing agenda. Clerk Hudson, would you do a roll call for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner.
The other way.
Here.
Town Administrator Carol Richardson.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
John Hudson, Town Clerk, present.
We will rise to the pledge. We will move on to review of the agenda. And if you mind putting that, our chief, we're going to review each agenda as we go to them. So this agenda for public hearings is. Clerk Hudson, do you want to outline?
Will do. Notice of public hearing, three minutes each speaker. A, the Town of Upper Marlboro Ordinance 2024-01, Town Tax Rate and Fiscal Year 2025 Budget. Notice is hereby given by the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, that on Tuesday, April 23, 2023, Ordinance 2024-01, was introduced and read at the April Regular Town Meeting of the Board of Town Commissioners proposing an ordinance of the town, of the commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro approving and adopting the budget for the Town of Upper Marlboro for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, fiscal year 2025, establishing the various town tax rates for fiscal year 2025, including a vacant property tax rate and setting the compensation for employees and officers, and to establish certain procedures for reviewing and amending same as more particulars set forth herein.
And then, item B.
Item B, Town of Upper Marlboro Notice of a Proposed Vacant Property Tax Rate Increase. For the taxable year beginning July 1, 2024, the Town of Upper Marlboro in Prince George's County, Maryland proposes to increase the real property tax rate for residential vacant properties from thirty-eight cents per one hundred of assessment to one dollar and fifty cents per one hundred of assessment, and commercial vacant properties from fifty-seven cents per one hundred of assessment to one dollar and fifty cents per one hundred of assessment as proposed in Ordinance 2024-01, Town Tax Rate and Fiscal Year 2025 Budget.
Is there, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the agenda for the public hearing portion of the meeting? Everyone?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye, so the ayes have it, there are no nays and no abstentions. So we'll move into the public hearing. So, public, if you are online, you're going to want to raise your hand to be recognized by the clerk. If you are in the room, please come forward. We are on item A, which is, as the clerk read in, relating to the town tax rate in 2024, or 2025 budget. You have three minutes to speak on this item, come forward or raise your hand. Are there, is there no one online?
Anybody online tonight?
Okay. Having no comments on item A, public hearing for the town tax rate in 2025 budget, we'll close the public hearing, item A, at 7:08 PM. And we will move on to the public hearing for item B, Town of Upper Marlboro Notice of Proposed Vacant Property Tax Rate Increase. Again, three minutes, you can come to the podium or raise your hand if you are online. Any hands online, Clerk Hudson?
There is nobody online tonight at all.
Oh, there's no one online, okay. All right then, it is 7:09, and I will close that section of the public hearing. Is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting?
So moved.
All in favor, and you guys can just say aye.
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 That's a unanimous adjournment of the public hearing section, no nays and no abstentions. We will move on to the special town meeting portion. Call to order for this is at 7:09 PM. And Clerk Hudson, would you do a roll call for us?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Commissioner Pravat.
Here.
Town Administrator Carol Richardson.
She's not here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Here.
Okay.
Chief David Burst.
Here.
John Hudson, Town Clerk, present.
Okay, so this section is our voting section of the meeting. Do you want to list items on the agenda again, Clerk Hudson, and then we'll vote by?
Will do. A, contract template, board vote. B, Resolution 2024-08, common sales and service, board vote, and ten adjournments.
Is there a motion to approve this agenda for voting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, no, aye. So no opposed, no abstentions, and we will go into the contract template. I don't know if Carol, our Administrator Richardson or Clerk Hudson wants to, I know that both of you spoke with the attorney on this, one of you wants to present it.
I can, I can do that. What you have in front of you is the template that was created by the town attorney. And what she has done is she has actually taken the Cummings information and included it within the template. So this is what will actually be used going forward with all contracts that the town sets up. So this is the boilerplate that people were talking about, and so this is what you all were voting on tonight with regards to the contract template.
Sure, I read ninety-nine seconds a little bit, I'll be honest, I missed a little bit of it. But the first sentence says, under the laws of the state of Indiana, is that, like, but?
Yeah, because, sorry, so Cummings was put into it for tonight, I think. So with regard to Cummings, it's the state of Indiana.
Okay.
So if it was a different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we're working on Cummings, and they're based out of Indiana, maybe, or?
Right. Yeah, so if it was a different, whoever the person were making the agreement with, it would say their corporation organized under the laws and state of.
Okay.
Well, actually, I disagree with that. I, I think that it should say regarding our laws, because if, in Maryland, because whether his business is out there and he's doing business here, it should, it should reflect, because our rules are different from, maybe different from their rules. So that would be my.
It's like, that's why I felt like I, by the Town of Upper Marlboro Municipal Corporation of the State of Maryland, and Cummings, a corporation, organization under the laws, like, does that?
So, well.
Yeah, no, exactly.
If I, if I. Sorry.
It's not, it's not saying we're being held to Indiana's laws, it's just saying that organizations, Cummings, were incorporated in the state of Indiana. They're done by Indiana's laws.
Right, so why do we even have, why do we even have that part in there? Because all we actually just need is the company name.
So they're authorized to do business in the state of Maryland, but there are articles of incorporation or organization generated in Indiana.
Okay.
And so just to kind of explain, a lot of this is that our attorney is very detailed, very, wants to include all parts and make sure that it's very clear who the agreement is with, and that there's no confusion about that. So she will sometimes add things that we may say, do we need that? Maybe, maybe not, but it helps define who we're doing business with.
One other thing I was thinking about was, a lot of contracts have a clause in there now for acts of God, like when COVID hit, I didn't see, maybe I missed it, something in there, some language in there that, you know, we're not going to lose, you know, a lot of people lost business and contracts were not fully completed during COVID. So how, do we have any language in there that's gonna, I didn't see it, I may have missed it, that is going to protect us in case we have some type of pandemic again? Now, most contracts like write that in now, that clause in there, that we, that, you know, so.
Would it be part eleven? That'd be like them not fulfilling contracts.
It is, but it doesn't speak of like an act of God or something like that. And that's kind of what, like, COVID-19, you know, that, that was a pandemic and it was an act of God, kind of.
Oh, sorry, so with regard to things to find, or put in contracts as acts of God, what I've actually heard our attorney say is, well, that's not very specific. What does that mean, right? So, and I don't know, Carol, if you have any insight from discussions, or John, from the discussions with her, but she really wants it to be something that's defined, right? Is that, if lightning strikes the generator, then we don't have to do the contract? Or is that, so she tries to be more specific, unless. So, if you have a.
Your point regarding, you know, acts of God, with the act of God, you don't, so the language regarding the breach is for any cause. Why that makes it?
Yes. So with regard to, I, I know that Cummings is put in here as an example, but with regard to using this template as the beginning basis for all our contracts, you know, that's what we're looking for the vote to be on tonight. So I guess it, we'll, we're going to take public comment, but it will be more, we're agreeing, this general template is what, when we begin a contract, we send over, and then the attorney uses as a base of negotiation with whoever.
So, one other thing, I don't see where we have an opportunity to put the cost, whatever the contract costs. Any, right, okay, so like, usually, I guess I would like to be, if you were just coming in and just reading that, I think it should be on separate page, like, cost and the scope of work, the scope of work. So it's on like, you can go directly to it. If you needed to find it, you can go, you know what the scope of work is, and if you're attaching an exhibit to it, which would be the proposal, would be your exhibit that you're going to attach to it, and you want to have any other things that you agreed upon with the vendor in that miscellaneous area. So this is a good, this is a good start, no, it's not a bad start.
I want to make sure I understand, so for the, the contract template, do you want to have like, almost like a summary sheet at the end with these and scope of work outlined in one place?
Well, yes. Because it summarizes what, what we understand the contract to be, right? And then it has the cost, and then it has whatever terms. If it's a one-year contract, it should be written in that area. And then if there's any miscellaneous things that you want to add, like you agreed that, some contractors don't like to take trash with them, just, this is a petty thing, I'm just making an example. You can put that in miscellaneous, like if Darnell, Director Bond spoke to them and said that, we agree that you're going to take the trash if we sign this contract. So that would be in your miscellaneous areas. You have, you have room to put whatever else you need to put down. Because other than that, you don't have any room to, it's so straightforward. You don't have any room to elaborate or, or an explanation. Now, if you have ten thousand contracts in front of you, you want to go right to a page where you just have the basics of your information, right there. Want to be able to turn to that page, see what the contract cost is, see what your, your terms and conditions are, I mean.
Okay.
I forget, it's right here. That part is that right here on the first page?
So the commencement, the commencement date is when you guys agree to the services and when they're going to start. So commencement date could be like, you can sign a contract, you can, the contract, whereas, you're going to sign the contract up here. But your commencement date is the date you'd like the contract to start, like if it was June 1st, so that's down here, yes. I think you need to isolate that.
So you're asking for basically a contract brief, the scope of work, the pricing, that I referenced in the section up here, but you're asking for basically a one-pager of this is the price.
So, let me just say, so when you have a contract and you have the scope of work, right, and you attach it as an exhibit, you don't attach their, their terms of, their terms, you don't attach that to your contract, you throw that out. Because they're looking at, they're following your terms. So even though they include it with the scope of work and the, well, the proposal, you don't include this in your contract when you sign it and you give it back to them. Like when, because they signed the contract first, and then you execute the contract, right? So when you give it to them after you type it up, you put the, the proposal there, but you take out their terms and conditions. Because if you have it in there, then you're agreeing to their terms and conditions. So you have to take it out.
No, I understand, the, the language here says that the proposal is only limited to pricing. But the, the language is basically striking the, the terms and conditions of their proposal.
Right, but they can argue with you in court about that, so you definitely want to take it out.
So, do you want to use the contract brief, make my motion easier? Is that okay? Yeah, go ahead.
Number one, because it references Cummings, because it was usually for Cummings.
Right.
But will that be, again, you're talking about the quote, which is necessarily what you finally agreed to. So.
Say it again, sorry.
Number one, it says, it references, like, for example, Cummings, the February 23, 2024 quote. Hey, that's their quote, but that doesn't mean that's what you agreed to tag. So it's like, why is it, is the quote in there, what's the final agreement? Proposal that was agreed to is the only thing that is needed, I think.
Yes, the proposal should be attached to the contract.
Right, so number one, I don't understand the need for it, maybe you're thinking.
No, the quote is not necessary, it would only be the proposal, sorry.
Yeah, so, well, I think this is because you're agreeing to this, for Cummings, we're agreeing to this, not really, it's a quote.
But we're talking about just the template right now.
Right, so, but generally, in, in your template, again, it's going to be able to change whether we're agreeing to quote or whether we're agreeing to a proposal, or whatever it is we're agreeing.
A cost proposal, a cost, a cost proposal is the same as a quote.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is.
So that's a cost proposal, it's the same, it's the same difference.
Right, with regard to it being a template, it's a template, that word is going to change with each contract. So.
And it just should be more detailed, because the quote may not be as detailed. So you definitely want to make sure that in the quote, for the price, the cost proposal, that it's actually detailed as to what the scope of work is. Because I find those to be a little skimpy sometimes with information, so.
Right, and I think that's all, like, again, template, lawyer takes it, or, well, when we are starting the conversation, the department head will probably send our basic template, and then the negotiations will go through that department head and the lawyer to get it to say either quote or proposal, or whatever it needs to say, and then whatever amounts it needs to say, and whatever changes need to be made. So, all right, go ahead.
Just really quick, so, from what I'm hearing, it seems like we can just incorporate what's currently on the screen as a separate, because it has the price and all of the conditions and all that. And we could add that to this contract rule, that's.
When we get to the next item, yeah.
That's basically what I'm saying, it's, it's a summary, you're going to have your scope of work, you're going to have your cost, you're going to have your terms of your contract, whether it's one or two years, you're going to have all of that on one page. So you can go right to it and you'll see it, and it's, and it's, because it's in here, yes, but it's, it's, it's hidden. So you need to be able to go right to it and know exactly what you are agreeing to.
I think if we just add the type of contract to that.
So what I, what I just want to clarify is that the, the agenda item we're on is the contract. So we're getting a little, no, it's, it's fine, because I want to make sure we take public comment on the contract template, and then we'll vote.
But what Karen is saying, we want to add to that template.
Right, with this contract brief, yes. So that's, I put it here, so when I raise the motion, it comes right. But I want to give the public a chance to comment.
Yep.
And then we'll try the motion, see if we've gotten it. I think we're all on the same page. Is there any public comment?
No one online.
So we're going to make some changes when we talk about the Cummings one, but is there a motion to approve the general contract template as a starting basis for attorney and department head negotiations of contracts with the addition of a contract brief?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk Hudson, would you call the roll, please?
Will do. President Franklin. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
To move us on to item B, which is, has Resolution 2024-08, which is the customized agreement with relation to Cummings. What I'm, what I'm hearing, that with regard to this, we want to use this agreement, we want to use only what equates the packet pages eleven and twelve attached to it, and not pages thirteen and fourteen. And that, just have all the information that we would want on it. So that we can, because of time, it would allow us to say, on this specific contract, we're waiving the contract brief in the interest of time and maintaining the quote that we have. Does that make sense?
So, Director Bond, so are you only doing what's highlighted in yellow? Okay, so what about your low bank?
So that, the full service was supposed to.
Okay. Because sometimes they do try to do some extra stuff.
Anyone have other questions for Director Bond on the contract itself? And Director Bond, do you have anything you want to say on the contract? We will take public comment on the Cummings contract specifically.
There's no comment online.
Okay, having no comment, we'll move on. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-08, Cummings Sales and Service?
Point of order, I have to read it into the.
Oh, yes, please do so, thank you.
Resolution 2024-08, session, special town meeting dated May 14, 2024. A resolution of the Board of Town Commissioners up for the Town of Upper Marlboro to approve a maintenance agreement with Cummins Sales and Service for the generator at Town Hall and to authorize the execution of the agreement.
And I just want to point out, as we're discussing this, that you'll notice that now therefore be it resolved, it says that is in substantially the same form attached here too, to execute. Because if there is, are any other legal concerns that our attorney finds in the contract negotiation, they want the room to make sure that Cummings complies with them. I just want to be full disclosure about that. Did you have? So is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-08?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk Hudson, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, we are going, sorry. All in favor of adjourning the special town meeting section and moving into Board one? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, no nays and no abstentions. So we'll do call to order, 7:31 PM for our board work session. Clerk Hudson, would you call our roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Colbert.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. Pravat.
Here.
Town Administrator Carol Richardson.
Here.
Public Works Director Darnell Bond.
Here.
Police Chief David Burst.
Here.
John Hudson, Town Clerk, present.
We're move, oh, sorry, right into our business, which is starting with A, Ordinance 2024-01, which is the FY 2025 budget. If you are in the audience and have already seen the packet, and if you are a commissioner, you, you have two more, these are details, details of two of the line items you have that will go with this. Our accountant advises that we ought to adopt the ARPA spending plan, and I think Commissioner Lot, you may remember, that we adopted, or, or, that we adopted an ARPA spending plan. And now that ARPA has to be, funds have to be, what's the word, committed, right? By the end of the calendar year, he would like us to reaffirm that plan with the correct numbers from what we actually spent each previous year and this year's numbers to have that money committed by the end of the year. You will see that we, to make reporting and committing easier, we put most of this simply to loss of revenue reimbursement, that makes all of that, everything that's left over easier to handle. And he advises that if we adopt that, with the budget, because what that really is, is this one line item in the budget, transfer from reserve. this one line item in the budget, transfer from reserve seventy-eight, seven-two-five, that is what the ARPA is. That, that will be the plan that we need to adopt to comply with federal regulations. And if you're in the audience, there's copies on the podium. But just so you understand what that supplement is for and why we would adopt it with the budget. And then your other supplement is just the capital improvement plan that is like how some of the grant funding is being spent, what some of the debt service for the vehicles equates to and other expenses that we might need after annization. It's just a lot of this plan moving forward.
So, sorry.
Yeah, so the Marlboro Food Bank is a food bank, it's in all the churches in the Upper Marlboro area or local church in the Upper Marlboro area. It goes out of, St. Mary's.
Is the church up here on two oh two?
It actually goes out of the school on two oh two because they have more room for it.
And up in two oh two before.
Probably. It used to be at Trinity, but it serves the Upper Marlboro area, serves Upper Marlboro residents. We coordinate with them. So that's what that is. And we always have a bin for donations here at Town Hall, if you want to donate.
Couple of questions.
No, it's fine.
Have to be encumbered, obligated, or expended by the year or the calendar year?
By the calendar year, not spent, but obligated.
So obligated, meaning that it's tied to, when I think of obligated, I think of funds being encumbered, I mean, that means that it's tied to some contract, some mechanism that we're spending the funds, plan for spending the funds, but it's not necessarily tied to anything.
Right, so.
Marlboro Food Bank, or unless we have a type of labor claim that we're going to run out of any five thousand dollars. Station, I'm just wondering.
Right, right, so. Money's gonna move around again?
Right, well, no, it can't move around, but once we get to the end of the calendar year, that's it.
Right.
So we'll cut the check to Marlboro Food Bank, you know, over the summer or in the fall. I think we usually try to cut it to the end of the holidays when they're buying more like fresh stuff. Downtown beautification, Director Bond will be spending money in the summer and the fall and he'll have spent ten thousand dollars on beautification before the end of the calendar year.
So do you have specific things that you're gonna be spending the beautification money on?
For the most part, it's gonna be the cleaning of the streets downtown, also one, hours of fat around town and a day of silence that needs to be. When would that start?
He's always during beautification.
That ten thousand dollars has to be spent by the.
Calendar year.
It has to be done by the end of the calendar year. So it's really an accounting game because he's easily gonna spend ten thousand dollars on beautification before the end of the calendar game or calendar year. And so the accountant just has to go in and say, this, 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 and this was specifically ARPA beautification. The only potential problem is the resident assistance. And so what I think in, was that the, he was gonna look into this and get back to us now that I'm thinking about it, but what he had said is if it's a plan, if we have a plan for the resident assistance, which we do, then it's obligated to that. And he was double checking that and if he comes back this Thursday and says, no, we'll just roll it into lost revenue and use it for a resident assistance.
For ARPA, it's just a huge loss of revenue, so maybe just combined that.
Right, yeah.
Sarah, what exactly is resident assistance?
So, yeah, there's a resident assistance program. It is four hundred dollars for rental or utilities assistance. It can be up to twice a year, I don't remember if it's calendar or fiscal.
Usually twice a year.
So, yeah, you have to be a town resident. There's a pretty simple application. When an application comes in, we have a group that includes one church leader from Upper Marlboro, one resident, there's a group of residents, and one member of each government department. So someone from each of their departments convenes, they just make sure they meet the qualifications and they approve it. It, it does get used, it doesn't get used a lot, but. So, and Commissioners Brooks and Pravat, do you understand all the ARPA, because I mean, it's kind of confusing.
We went over the last one.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any other questions on the budget ordinance or any items?
Would we have money allocated for M M L?
And S U B and, no, maybe anything, and general government expenses, commissioner expenses. My words aren't repeating at the top. Each one. This is this year's number. Any other? Comments, commissioners, department heads? Item B, twenty twenty-four oh two, FY twenty-four budget adjustment. And this is just kind of going through what revenue is coming in, what, what, it's smaller because it has more columns, more revenue is coming in, what expenses are going out, and trying to get the columns to match up to income expense. This is gonna be pages thirty-five, well, that, so the ordinance starts at thirty-one, but the detail on thirty-five. And what this is, is this is just gonna line us up because we got more income coming in, less going out in some areas and more needing to go out in other areas, so line us up to get us through the end of the fiscal year. We will have to do one reconciliation ordinance in, is that done in like July, August, I feel like? To line up what we actually brought in and what we actually spent. Any questions, comments? If everyone is okay with these, what I would like to do is make them their own full packages and create a place on the website where the public can go and view these documents and provide us any final comments before we vote at the end of the month.
Okay.
I see nodding heads, so I think, all right. Clerk Hudson will do that. Okay. So we move on to C twenty twenty-four oh three personnel. The only real change was to, for the foremen and the proper pay grade, they had not been in the proper pay grade in years.
I have a question, this is a general question. I know that you're the supervisory person for the staff, but do we get to see like who's doing what as far as people are actually correctly documenting their hours and stuff like that?
Um, I mean, it's, it's personnel files, right?
Right, but not everybody is, well, okay, the way I read the charter is that I know that certain people are directly under you and the rest are under the board supervision. That's where I read the charter, is that not correct? Can you?
No.
Does anybody, do you know anything about that?
That was, Attorney Ruff spoke with us about this, is that all staff falls under the mayor.
Well, I gotta bring up, I gotta see where it says it in charter, but somehow another, I feel like, I feel like with everybody now being their own boss, I mean, I wonder is everyone doing what they're supposed to do? Like us not having the administrator or whomever overseeing and you're pretty busy and we all are pretty busy, who is really giving that oversight? Because I hear a lot of things from residents that, you know, that is kind of disturbing or that they have questions and it's kind of like, hmm, I don't know.
So if you're getting concerns from residents about staff, you need to bring those to me because, and.
It's nobody in particular, let me just say.
Well.
It's just the question is, their question, question that has been brought forth to me is, okay, how are we manning the hours? How are we making sure that people are actually coming to work and working their hours and not skipping off somewhere?
So I think, I do want to clarify sort of two departments where I can see people might be confused. Our police department works a varying shift every day.
Yes.
So you're never gonna see them at consistent times and I make a point that I don't want to know when they're working evenings or when they're working days because I don't want someone to ask me and it slips and then, well.
It's politics.
I'm not talking, I'm not talking about that because Chief is the overseer over that, so I'm not talking about that because he is manning his, his.
Right.
Folks, I'm talking about, because I know that they have worked out, I'm talking about everybody else, all the other staff in the office.
Okay, so Director Bond's team, just so everyone is aware of this, once it hits a certain temperature, they come in, do they come in at? Okay.
Friday, so they can, they can.
So they come in really early. Once it hits a hot temperature, they come inside and do interior stuff. So you're gonna see less public work screws on hot days, that is. They're still here, they're still working, you just don't see them as much. And then with general government, we have a rotating, each general government employee has one tell at work day. And.
So how are we making sure the checks and balances? Who is monitoring people putting in their time, people taking, they're actually putting that they, they left early, that, you know, whatever.
So.
Who is manning that?
Correct.
Because now that everybody is a department head, how do we know who's doing what?
So each department head reviews, so they all.
And who reviews them?
So, so the processes that payroll gets put together on the accounting firm, each department head is given their, they've already approved the time, they are given a check to make sure the time is showing up correctly with hours and vacation. And then I'm reviewing it, so I'm reviewing Chief's time, Darnell's time, and Carol's time. And then I'm giving the final approval on payroll.
So, so vacations, all of that stuff is being documented, hours that they leave early, all of that is being documented?
So vacation, sick time, yes. If, so for example, tomorrow the Town Hall is closed to public, it's, it's all Saturday, the department heads and Clerk Hudson are all instructed to come in at ten, not at nine on that day because they're here and they're here for more than an hour. So sometimes with the salaried employees, I was in on Saturday, I need to leave a little early today.
That's, that's fair, that's fair.
And that comes through either Administrator Richardson for the lower, you know, people who are under her and it comes through me. I know that it is confusing to people because people have different hours, like Chief is here from seven to three, right? And you're here from, and then Carol has to, some days are one and some days are another. So everyone is not on a nine to five schedule?
Understood.
Someone is here for a longer period of time.
Somebody is looking to make sure that everybody is putting their time down, even the department heads, that they're leaving early, that that is being documented and if they're taking vacation, that it's documented as well.
Right, so I am docu, I am supervising that, so it's.
And how do we know that that's actually happening? Is that a H R, is that, is, didn't that be going?
How does anybody know anything?
Right, that's what, that's why I'm asking the questions, like is it, is H R overseeing some of this?
At the end of the day, you just have to assume positive intent from your coworkers, right?
I'm, I'm, it is my job to oversee it. I am overseeing it.
No, I'm not, I listen, I'm not, so I'm just asking the questions that have been asked to me, so I'm presenting them in the public.
Like, how do you really know?
No, but I'm just in, it's, it's, it's who, who actually, do you actually go and do an audit to see if people are doing, because I mean, we do it on our job, so.
I actually just, I don't know if we're, totally off topic, but with regard to the department heads, I have a very good sense of how they're tense. I have had department heads who leave early for a week, but then I'm on the phone with them working on something because it's got a deadline of midnight and we're working from ten P M to eleven or there's an emergency or whatever it is. So I think what people see is what they see. That isn't always the whole of what's actually happening and what work is actually getting done. Some work you can see, some work you can't see, some work is being done from home. For example, it is summer, my kids are home, they're about to murder each other half the time, so I'm, I am working from my kitchen table more than I am working from the office, but I am still working and I'm still available.
Okay.
So I think, you know, people can assume what they want to assume, but everyone is working.
Well, I don't think it's a bad, it's a bad thing to ask the question instead of having this assumption that they're asking the question so we can clarify. So everybody's, stuff is being documented, so that's not.
Um, Sarah, I had a, I have a request.
Yes.
For these documents because it's a little bit of a petty request, it is one of those requests. Question seven, compensation, I know that the A is scratched out, but if you start this, that paragraph, it goes right into an acronym and I had no idea what that acronym COLA meant.
Okay.
And then you go into C and then it says cost of living parentheses COLA and that's how I found out it meant.
It should be in that first one, yes.
I really feel like any acronyms, it should be stated what they are before we start talking in acronyms just because I genuinely didn't know what COLA meant in this scenario and then I texted Caleb that I wanted a COLA, so. That is so funny.
So we'll make that change. That should have been there, that's it. But A didn't, isn't meant to be scratched out, it's just that the attorney wanted to change two step ten to continuing through all steps on the pay chart and when you did that and deleted this period, it made the A scratch out. The A is actually still there.
Okay.
It's just a Microsoft word. It's just a Microsoft word. Any other questions? So we'll make that change. Did you have anything else?
That was the, it was just clearly the way it should.
No, it's not petty. Correct. Um, okay. We're going to move on to the church three RFP submission. So I just want to explain for those who haven't seen us do this before, um, we are supposed to be receiving sealed bids. A lot of our bids come in over email, um, which complicates the sealed process. So, um, to explain how this process is working right now, our administrative assistant is the only one who has access to that. When the bids come in, she's printing them off and putting them aside. Um, and then on the date that they're due, she handed them to the relevant department head, which is our Director of Public Works. And then he shared them with our town clerk who printed them out and put them in here. So this is the first time any elected official is seeing this. This is the proper way to do sealed bids and we haven't done it like this, so we're starting that process. So this is a memo from Director Bond for us. Oh, that's, okay. I think I have ten for some reason, I'm not sure. If a commissioner wants to grab these, I said we probably only needed one copy for right now. Um, and I am actually going to turn it over to
A total of five firms were solicited to bid on RFP twenty twenty four oh one. These sponsors from Site Design Incorporated and Charles P. Johnson and Associates. Um, Site Design, Site Design is located within the corporate limits of town and CPJ is located. Both firms have the evaluation and selection criteria that have done a non-qualified for work. Incorporated prices of all D-PY and sole conservation and pretty much anything required by the permit process. They both also include options to assist with the construction bidding and the site process. That would be an issue of cost, um, but it's broken down by contract. So where these firms really differ greatly is pricing, Site Design Incorporated, uh, proposed flat fees per item and an hourly rate sheet for items that come up in the permitting and fall outside the municipal work. DPJ instituted flat rates as well, however, at each successive phase of completion, you know, our hourly rates associated per rather than employee. So, um, someone who was strictly a line of duty, they need an hourly amount that goes to the project manager or the overtime. It's strictly that according, so that's how that is structured. So the hourly rates associated per, uh, then they're thinking at thirty, sixty and ninety percent, uh, phase intervals. This is a common practice, but it does explain the vast difference in price. Site Design Incorporated proposal cost is forty thousand dollars. Their design timeline is ten months. Um, timeline will be extended to fourteen, sixteen months depending on whether it's going to be by D-PY. For every, um, that is true, playground project, that has been kind of tremendously complicated. So, um, this is why they add that extension in there. Charles P. Johnson and Associates' proposal is two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Uh, and their design timeline is twelve months.
They cut off, they cut off. I was going to flip over, thank you.
So on the next page, uh, unfortunately that is cut off. So the first column will be Site Design, the second column is CPJ and Associates. So everything, everything listed here was what each contract contained pretty much apples to apples. Also floodplain delineation, um, twenty-five hundred for CPJ Associates that priced incorporated in the erosion and settlement control, stolen work management is not talked out. Uh, natural resources inventory, which is, you know, I said, I have a natural resources on site. A hundred for, um, Site Design is seventy-three, seven thousand three hundred eighty and so on and so forth. So the optional items of construction oversight is hourly and there is a breakdown in each contract that I don't have listed here. However, um, CPJ Associates, they listed theirs as eleven thousand and they include seven five-weekly site expenses to, to monitor the construction time.
Is that, where is that on the?
That's the bottom.
Oh, okay. That's CP, CPJ. Okay, sorry. Um, can I ask a question? Sorry. So I know you sort of explained that the big difference in price has to do with the hourly rates as you progress through it. Does that mean by the end, uh, site design would be just as much as CP, CPJ?
No, so, uh, Site Design, they incorporate flat rates, it's going to be twenty-five hundred dollars for this specific.
Okay.
So with, um, CPJ Associates, they have breakdown, okay? We had, we are allowing these hours per employee for this, which is where the cost is.
So that means that Site Design says, we're giving you floodplain delineation and it's going to cost you two thousand five hundred dollars. CPJ is saying, well, nothing on floodplain delineation, but let's just assume. They're saying our floodplain delineation is going to cost you a hundred and fifty dollars an hour and we expect it to take ten hours. But if it takes twenty hours, you're going to pay us a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for those extra ten hours.
Who are you comfortable with?
Well, hold on, because we're actually, we're not supposed to do that in open meetings.
Oh.
So So the second, sorry, the second step of the process would be that we're, right now, we could ask Director Bond general questions, all that, we are going to have a
Like, that's something to change, hey? Who you want, who you want?
We are going to, we'll talk about this at the prior to our next meeting. Um, and we'll figure out when that's going to be and that's when, um, Director Bond will, um, express other things, but we don't want to, uh, what's the administrator, which is in what's the, the closing, it's called like something about the competitive bidding process or whatever. So we'll handle that obviously.
So the D, they said eight to ten months, but then they said could be extended to fourteen to fifteen. But, um, CP and J didn't mention an extension at all or a D-PY, but are they like guaranteeing somehow this twelve months?
They're terrible.
Do you see our flashbacks?
They're, they're, they're a big holdup.
Do they use that? Yes.
To, to answer that question, they did not feel comfortable saying how long it will take D-PY.
And then right by that.
And what, and what I want to point out is the bottom of the parking lot falls within the upper gear floodplain.
Yes.
So that is going to be a very sensitive process because whether D-PY is going to allow us to sort of work with it as is or are we going to have to raise the grading to raise it out of the floodplain, so.
You can be allowed to raise it. May have to.
And there's also an, uh, an associated cost of that, um, uh, for, for winter.
And I think fourteen to sixteen months is an underestimate, but remember, I, you asked me, we were talking about the third part, was it third party? And I forgot to give you that guy's card. Was, was that in either of these?
I believe
I assume you asked me about it in relation to this.
Yeah.
You did.
I saw that camera.
That's okay. Um, okay. So there is a way to get through D-PY faster, but you have
How much, like?
Well, that's, I think it's in one of these proposals.
Is it like fifty percent more or is it like?
I, I don't know, but I have a contact, I met the person who supervises it, so I have his contact and I'm sure that's correct. It's like you, you hire someone to get you through D-PY and so they do all the reviews, so when D-PY gets it, it's already correct. Okay, do we have other questions about the proposals? And then also, um, we're going to, if you want copies, just take them with you. The two of us who want, or one of us who wants copies, take them with them. Let us know and Clerk Housen will print them out.
Um, we, in our P, we specify what type of contract we price contract, I mean, just a cost plus cost reversal.
No, but we talked about that. We, the board talked about the timing too.
Right. If we're, without, here's my question, carefully here, without giving away your position, are you able to say that the amount of work is comparable that they're offering between?
I would say yes. Trying to phrase this. I, I, I will say
We can just wait for the closed session if you're not comfortable, you're allowed.
If you want to take that one, that's fine.
Any other questions? Yes, sorry, Gus. You can ask anything.
What, what is the hourly rate for each job? Oh, we have one.
Yeah. It's a, it's pretty much a different rate now.
Now, give me some time to actually reread that.
Can I do something a little strange, but like show of hands, who wants a printed copy versus an electronic copy?
Well, I prefer no one.
Okay, so three, three printed copies?
Yeah.
So Clerk Housen, could you put two more copies off the printer?
I'll take a printer.
Three more copies off the printer for us while we're waiting so people can pick them up on the way out. Thank you. I'm, I'm trying to save, we're trying to save trees in printing costs if we, if we
Some stuff, you actually need to actually look at it on paper.
And that's
At work, I actually, I print stuff out, it's like, no, it's, I need to see it on paper.
So we're going to move from this and we'll talk about the closed session scheduling when we get there. Um, I brought up this Spring Branch Stormwater again, but I don't have any movement on that yet. So I don't know if anyone had any additional questions or thoughts, or we just want to move on to the next.
One second. Right here where it says meetings, they're going to charge us two hundred and fifty dollars?
Per meeting?
Per meeting. Director Bond, Court said, um, we will take eight, so it's a meeting without contractors review, agency, representative, two hundred and fifty dollars each.
Is that for hour or is that a flat rate?
I'm sorry, I'm, this is Site Design. It's, uh, number nineteen on page eight.
I think yes, they're going to charge us that fee when they come to a pay.
Yes. Okay.
Is that hourly or flat rate?
It's a flat rate.
It's a flat rate, but is that a meeting, like if we ask to come to town meeting or is that any meeting where we checks are over, that meeting, check on progress, they're charging two hundred and fifty dollars?
Like they're re-upset and we need to have a meeting and they're like, okay, two hundred and fifty dollars. I don't think they're, I don't think it's when they're talking to Darnell, because it says like contractor.
That's what I was going to say, they're
Cause it's a town meeting and cheaper. There's something built in.
So what happens when we have to meet? Yeah, what happens when we have to meet and go over the punchline?
But I gather to be all of everything.
The consultation?
But I believe this is built in as for project oversight once we move to the construction phase and for coming to the town.
So can you, can you get clarification on that before our closed session?
Yeah, because if they have to, okay, they have to be invited out to come to the meetings, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there may be meeting, like a, a site visit isn't, is that a meeting? If you can just get some clarity around what that is.
Yeah.
What does a meeting?
That's what I need to
Site visits is a part of, is a part of what they have to do to get the work done.
I would get clarification.
Um, one of you can keep the, the printouts from here, Derek, if you want to keep that in the, I don't know where the other one is.
Oh, okay. I will wait down there.
Um, and then the other three can pick them up. Yeah, he, yeah, so they're for, those are for Derek and he's making more, we can print our own copies if we want them. Okay, so we're going to move on to, and we're going to kind of skip over Spring Branch Stormwater Management because we don't have any movement on that right now and go to the leave policy, if that's okay with everyone?
Um, about the leave policy, you made a, you had a draft of just a sheet that you had in the last meeting. You know, if, I don't really see a lot of time, it's been a lot of time. If, if folks want to give their leave, that's, that's their choice. And they need to just go ahead and fill that out and be done with. Now the meeting's been a whole lot of time on people's leave.
Okay.
And they want to choose it.
Yeah, let them choose who they want to give their leave to.
And we're good with this, how HR sends it.
Let them choose who they want to give their
You have questions?
I don't like, I don't like entirely all of it, I'll be honest, Sarah. Um, because it says who have medical issues or emergency because it starts getting into people's personal lives, like if, if you, say, say you come to me as a friend, hey, Emma, I'm trying to go to the Bahamas, I have thirty-eight hours, I need two more to take a whole week off. Well, you donate two hours and I'm like, yeah, I got you. And then, now we have to go to Sarah and say, hey, um, Derek might have to get surgery next week and making up a whole damn lie to donate two hours to you. It's none of her business.
So, but it kind of is because we're donating, vacation is sick, not vacation, we're not donating vacation. It's not a vacation donation policy, it's a lead. But I will say this, that this is one of the points of the lawyer and I don't know, um, Administrator Richardson, where you got with the lawyer on this, because she didn't like this, because what is an emergency? What is a medical issue? And she wanted to make some changes to this and I, I don't know.
I don't like it. I will be straight up honest, I don't like it. If somebody wants to give some hours to somebody else for whatever reason, that's on them. I like the rest, I like that you cannot be greedy and take somebody's hours and keep it and not use it and, you know, whatever, like, I like that. But, um, medical issues, emergencies, like when I submit my PTO to my management team, I don't tell them for what, ever. Like I never tell people, I say, I am taking these days off, period. I don't say for what, I don't say I'm sick. If I call out today, I don't say, hey, my kids are sick or I, none, none of that, like
But we have, the county of Upper Marlboro has a rules, right? The county of Upper Marlboro does have it, here's when you can take sick leave.
Well, because you guys are creating the rules right now, we are working on creating these rules, aren't we? Isn't that what we're doing right now?
We have an existing sick leave and vacation leave and bereavement leave policy.
Other reasons that I would kind of adhere in point earlier is if employees are swapping vacation and then people are coming to me for vacation and people have more vaca, you know, I have to make sure that everyone's working and it's
you know, I have to make sure that everyone's working, and if you've given two hours to Derek, and he's, I can't give him the vacation, 'cause he's not getting his job, then, you know what I mean? So, you know, come to work, it's, it's like giving people more vacation, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, just, don't add to what I'm saying, though, okay, because I'm not saying approve everybody's transfers here. 'Cause I'm not saying, like, go ahead and say yes to everybody's. I, what I am saying is, I don't wanna have to explain the scenarios every single time I wanna donate hours to someone. I don't, like, if you.
But most of the times, look, I feel like this, most of the.
Qualify for sick leave.
Somebody's gonna know, like, you're gonna know, oh, my, if I come to you, hey, look, I'm sick, I need blah, 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 I'm gonna tell you. So if you decide to donate it to me.
Right, that's on me.
Then that's, that's on you, right.
And then, you, Sarah, you wouldn't know, carrying performance, and you would be like, well.
Well, sick isn't about performance, that's the thing.
Well, that's also another thing, but I'm saying, you would know, is what I'm getting at, you would know if that should be approved or not, because at the end of the day, it has to be approved, whether somebody's donating hours or not.
But how can we reject it if the person wanna give somebody their hours?
So, maybe they're doing too many hours, maybe they've already donated hours, maybe, like, there's so many reasons why you would wanna reject it.
So I think we really wanna keep this with sick leave. Vacation, you can give someone, some of your vacation, you can donate vacation leave to transfer to sick leave. And I think the trick to, to part one from the last conversation I had, like, I don't know, probably like several weeks ago with the attorney, is to just say, an employee who has a situation that qualifies for sick leave, or an employee who qualifies for sick leave, right, to take sick leave, can be the recipient of leave donation. So it's tying it to our existing policy.
Right, but can't the person choose who they're giving their, this is the thing, I have.
Yeah.
They should be able to choose who they're giving their leave, their, their hours too, 'cause it's money.
They shouldn't force them to giving anything.
Right. It's their, it's their money, so.
An act of kindness, really, but.
Well, if you don't like the other person.
I don't know, it, I didn't realize you guys have different banks, because where I work at, we don't have a bank.
We don't have a bank.
It's just a whole lot of hours that I have, and I use the hour the heck I want to use it.
We have, we have, we have sick, we have annually, sick leave, we have bank.
Oh.
And we can donate leave to whomever we want to, but then it goes to the HR to approve it, and most of the time it does, but some people do. We just had one situation though, where this person had maternity leave, and she says, I, I need to be out three months. Her three months came, she never came back. So everybody gave her leave.
Yeah, and that's a different scenario, 'cause maybe that's what happened then. Occasionally, people will take advantage of it, and that's, you have to take, you have to take the L, and we, I get that, you know, but we're hoping that people don't do that, right? And we're hoping that people will understand that you are giving your leave because, whatever reason, you've used yours up, and that's kind of the way I see this whole policy, is like, somebody is being kind to give you some sort of hours, and I don't wanna get into anybody's real business. It's not for us to do.
To the extent that, I mean, sick leave, sick leave has requirements, like, if you.
So maybe we should, maybe we should call it vacation, you can only use it, because it's, so, sick leave is usually, you know, when you leave a company, you can't take your sick leave, would you?
Got it.
So I would suggest, maybe it not be sick leave that we let them give up, maybe we let them give up their vacation time.
Yes, it's vacation to sick. The policy is, say.
But does it matter, why can't you change it?
And Darnell says, oh, chief, you used all your sick leave, I wanna give you ten hours.
Right, of vacation time.
But it has to be his vacation time, it can't be his sick.
Right, 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 and he can use it for, for.
But he can only use it for sick.
Okay, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
So, hey, 'cause there are two parts to this. There's a medical issue, and then an emergency, but an emergency may not be a medical issue. So therefore, if you're donating vacation, why can't that person use it as vacation if they have an emergency? Not sick, but they got an emergency.
Because, well, because what the lawyer is suggesting is that, how do you define that? And that it's better to say, and I don't know if you talked with her more recently, but that's something that, any employee who has a, who qualifies for sick leave, instead of who has a medical or issue or emergency, but who qualifies for sick. Because it's being donated as sick leave.
Well, why can't we just say, any employee that qualifies for leave?
'Cause I don't think we should be throwing around vacation.
Make it general, make it ju- well, I mean.
Between employees, because.
But I'm not gonna give you my vacation, Sarah, to take a long vacation, and I can't, and I'm not using my own, you know what I'm saying, I don't think somebody's gonna do that. I wouldn't, I'm not willing to give up my, my three weeks vacation and give you a week.
I mean, I think there.
Unless it's a real reason.
I think there needs to be, because I know that there are people that might be taken advantage of by a policy leave. There are people that might have two hundred hours in their bank, just sitting there, for whatever reason, they don't take time off. There should be some sort of clause here where it says, do not, you cannot transfer more than X amount, you know, more than a week's pay. Because, to prevent from somebody being taken advantage of. I do agree with that, but I just don't want this to be exclusively sick, exclusively this, exclusively that, because I think that does, it doesn't, it's not building a team, Sarah, it's building, like, I don't even know how to describe this into words, other than like, a feeling, the warm and fuzzy feeling, that I wish this town hall had more of. And that's having each other's backs. If somebody is missing one hour to take a week off at vacation, they should rely on their team members to donate that hour. It's that simple. I- if somebody is willing to do that.
I disagree that we don't have a warm, fuzzy feeling. I think we do have a warm, fuzzy feeling, first of all, um, but.
I don't know.
I'm gonna hear the judge, but.
It comes down to, if you.
However.
What you wanna do with your.
Well, I think the problem comes into how the leave goes out, right? When you retire, you can get leave paid out, when you leave, you get your vacation paid out, so like, if, there's a lot of around this, they, I, I don't like the idea of vacation donations, because vacation is actually, it can be paid out once a year, everyone can get vacation paid out, so vacation is more like money than.
So wait, wait, so wait, wait, if I donate, if I donate, uh, five hours to Colbert, he cannot turn around and use my damn money and cash out. You're not gonna allow that. No, because, no, because you, if you don't use it, if you don't use it, then you don't get it.
It says right here, if an employee who receives leave does not use all the donated leave, the remaining hours of the leave shall be restored to the who made the donation.
Right.
So, um, I agree with that, yes, you do not get to keep.
And you don't get to cash out on it? 'Cause it still has to be some.
So that has to be managed somehow.
Right, so you're not gonna allow somebody to cash out in some way. No, but I'm just saying, you, you, you know, I'm not gonna give somebody money, I mean, uh, hours, that's my argument, that's my say. What'd you say, chief? Come on, chief, come on, chief, come on, chief, say.
So what I'm gonna say is, I personally don't think it's appropriate for me to give annually to somebody sickly. Because my annual leave, like you said, I can be paid out, and I only get two hundred, or was it three twenty? We can't go over a certain amount, so if I give away something, then I'm giving away something, and it could be in good faith, but I can't get that back. Whereas if I donate sick, that's just rolling over, so you generally have more sick than you do annual. So if you wanna give somebody leave, you should give them your sick leave or annual, if they're in a situation not to handle, because I wanna.
Yeah, but what if they're not sick, though, chief, Quentin?
What if they're not sick and they just have a, a, an emergency, and they?
If y'all want to, then that's my fault, but I should not give my annual to somebody.
So you should, so the.
Well, you, wait, you asked for his opinion, he gave it.
I know, I'm, I'm breaking it down.
No, no, I'm not trying to convince you, so, so should we put on the paper, something like, a leave, a leave, um, slot for leave, or slot for sick, so that you can choose, I'm asking.
So, well, well, I wanna also say that HR and the attorney agree with this vacation to sick, not the, any, not sick to sick, and not vacation to vacation. They're the ones advising vacation.
Okay.
And it, it, I may personally, there's nobody doing this, 'cause I'm not gonna give away annual to somebody sick, because I'm losing. Because I'm losing hours that I can't accumulate.
Well, you can accumulate sick.
I'm gonna accumulate it, but if I lose it, I'll get it back. So if, if I give Darnell twenty hours at the beginning of the year, and I come up short for annual, 'cause I can't take sick, I'm not getting that. Or my leave, then I just gave him twenty hours that I couldn't be getting paid for.
Right.
But why would I do that?
Well, and why, why would the town allow you to give over sick that you're not gonna get paid for?
Because it's benefiting someone that, that needs it.
Really?
I mean, I'm thinking this is more or less, if someone is.
From, from the attorney and the HR point of view, it is their job to protect their client, right, which their client is the town. And all of this leave, of leave translates to money, right? So even one thing, you know, that has been a point of discussion, is like, if you were to give leave to Aiden, we just converted your salary to the salary of our assistant, right? And if Aiden was to give leave to you, we just converted his salary to your salary. Yeah.
That's a big jump.
But in sick leave, it's not the same, because you're not, you're not, you don't have the capacity of cashing it out, whereas the vacation you do. You can cash out vacation, you can't cash out.
Well, and, and maybe the other piece of this is that in order to get donated leave, you have to have all your, all your sick and vacation.
I agree with that.
So that you, you have no leave at all.
Right. That's generally how it happens, you've exhausted all of your leave, and now you're asking, you don't have two hundred hours of annual, three hundred hours of sick, but you need four hundred hours of sick, generally have to exhaust it, everything, you're at zero. So you're asking for something, because you're at zero, or you're in the negative. So if you ask for some, if you ask someone for leave, they say no, it's done. I said no, this person said no, you said no, move on.
You know, you're bringing up an interesting question, 'cause what, what if?
If you ask me for leave, and I tell you no, you ask Darnell for leave, he says no, what are you gonna do?
I guess, here's, here's a, another question, what if chief goes to Tyler and asks him, there's like a, or, or the point, Darnell goes to Tyler and asks him for leave, like, there's a power dynamic there.
But that has to be approved by you, because he's a department head, so it still has to be approved by you or somebody when it gets to the HR. And somebody at HR can say, well, chief shouldn't be getting leave from public works guy, this looks, what's, what's going on with this?
Yeah.
If he hasn't reached out to somebody in his department, has everybody told him no, because of the pay salary, if you were doing it by annual leave. Sick leave, it doesn't really matter, because nobody's cashing out sick.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, that makes a good point, that makes a good point, but I feel like this, if somebody is donating leave to you, you shouldn't be able to cash it out.
Definitely.
You shouldn't be able to.
You should not be able to cash it out.
Right, yeah, the sick would eliminate that.
All right, so, I think it, we, I've taken these notes, it needs to go back through the attorney and HR, um, or we build on it.
Yes.
Okay.
All I tell is coworkers, tread lightly with your leave.
Yes.
You, you, you have to, because it's, it's rough on DIBA here today, you know, you, especially with annually, no one's giving up their annual leaves.
Sorry.
I tell my people here, where you are not stabilized.
So I know this would be a controversial, this is gonna be a controversial potential. In conversation, negative policy. By that, I mean, if I don't have enough leave, let's, let's say, for an example, I wanna take a, a forty-hour vacation, a full week vacation, but I only have thirty-nine hours. I put one hour into the negative, and so basically, the town is advancing me, you know, it will accrue back.
Mm-hmm, I do that in my job, I can go up to one week.
Yeah, like, that person with the one hour, honestly, the department head is probably gonna say to me, they're one hour off, they're always here, they're not gonna be a problem, they're coming back, we should just advance that hour, and it would just happen without policy, 'cause it's a small amount.
Then how's that accounted for?
'Cause it goes into the negative and through ADP.
So we do have a negative.
Yes, so it will go into the negative on ADP, and then it will.
How negative are you guys allowed to go? Like, at my job, I've gone negative six, I'll be honest.
I've done negative four. I've done negative four now.
That wouldn't be get approved by.
I did negative four. Yeah, well, I did forty.
Thanks a lot. So, I don't think we've ever approved any, I, I know you guys have been here longer, I don't think we've ever approved negative leave, um, beyond like twenty hours.
So, I did not, I unintentionally approved negative, but I don't see balance it.
Yes.
So I think was like.
You don't have the ability, you're.
We, we have a, we have a chief version of ADP.
Right, so.
We're budgeting.
The person was on leave for a medical situation, so they were putting in leave, sick leave, but because I don't see their leave, they were actually in the negative, and it did come up negative like twenty-five or twenty-eight hours. So what they had to do was work those twenty-five, twenty-eight hours back, and it came back to, you know, one, two, four, five, whatever, then they got back on the regular rotation, so there is a negative balance.
ADP tracks it, and then our contractors who run ADP notice it, and. They can look up, they, they can look up individually, but it's not easy.
So I didn't need to get into a whole. Point being, I understand the notion behind donating leave and, and wanting to be teammates, and wanting to be, and helping people, and I get that and agree with it, but it sounds like there's a lot of different scenarios. Who gives what, what's the power dynamic, how do we handle this, how do we handle this situation where if you keep leaving the leave bucket with the person, whether they go negative? And maybe I'm not thinking about how much leave someone may be asking for to be donated, and how, if that exceeds. But I think that kind of scenario allows for those approvals to happen, going to the negative, if it's a emergency situation, if being generous and granting a couple of extra hours, because we work hard on vacations, they just need to get that, you know, last half of day, or whatever it is, and then, you know.
If they don't come back, is that up their last paycheck or?
Sorry?
They don't come back, then it usually comes out of your last paycheck.
Then it's deducted from your last paycheck, exactly.
My last question, so we can move on with this.
Yeah.
Um, has there been any issues with that?
I mean, we have leave donations going on right now, without any policy, and I just don't like it, because there's no policy, and, um.
Sometimes you don't need a policy, it makes it worse.
But, it, both HR and legal are, I think, we should have a policy.
So we're just trying to make sure people are getting their paycheck right now, always work out the.
Uncomfortable sleep.
Um, and I think the, the real, where this comes in is, say, like, the, um, maternity leave, or if someone has surgery, or, um, if someone just had, had, say, someone has to have regular treatments, or like, God forbid, something happens to someone that people wanna kind of gather around.
Oh, yeah, I always, I've, I've always given leave to people that I know that, that don't abuse it, but if there's, if there's a medical reason, and I make my own judgment, oh, yeah, I've always contributed leave to stuff like that, but I don't do that, I don't be giving folks no leave, and then abusing it every time you look around, they're all, no, don't come over here looking for nothing for me. It's not right. 'Cause there even, you get to certain people always asking, now they're doing leave without pay. Don't abuse your leave.
Um, I've had to do that, too. I didn't like that shit.
Sorry?
Um, I appreciate what Commissioner Probot said, in terms of trying to create an atmosphere that you're doing something, allowing employees to support their team members. That is so easy here, being frank. Um, the original version of this that came from the HR company, there was something changed that stuck out to me, um, that I, that ca, gave me pause, um, that a recipient must be employed for a minimum of ninety days and not be on a probationary status. Now, when people get hired, we don't delay what medical benefits they can get, they get those benefits immediately. So you, you, you gotta make sure your standards are consistent when you're giving benefits or, you know, things to your employees. The other thing is on whether a person can give you a lump sum of hours, or you gotta do a per pay period. Well, if a person wants to give you a lump sum of hours, I think administratively, that makes more sense. And if a person knows they got treatments they gotta go to, they need a lump sum, so that they know what they have. Um, if in fact we're trying to do something to help attainment.
How, how does, I mean, I know that there is basically just customer service aspect of Town Hall. So how do we do with like flexing hours?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the problem becomes when several people are flexing hours, I set this up, Town of Upper Marlboro, you, you sometimes get me, when you call the Town of Upper Marlboro. Um, and that's kind of where that problem comes in. Um, because we do have a small staff, and everyone does have stuff come up, but also, please call us, answer the question on the phone, I shouldn't be the one answering this phone. Um, so it, we have to have, get a balance between that, between getting everybody's needs met and also having coverage we need.
Oh yeah, I think flexing hours, it shouldn't happen if somebody else is already flexing. Right, if, if there is no coverage, then we can't, so we take that, so.
Alright, what are we doing with this?
So, but that's okay, we're gonna work, we're gonna work with, we're gonna work with HR and the attorney, um, and, and we'll vote on it hopefully next time. So I wanna go to the flag design, and I'm looking at my phone because the survey results here. Um, and actually, Clerk Hootson, do you want me to send these to you and you can put them on the screen?
That's gonna be difficult, cause I have to bring this down, so you probably have to just announce it based upon the results.
Um, sorry, um, so I just, I'm sending you the, um, file that Audrey sent over with the results, but, okay, hold on. I, I'm gonna have to bring my gavel, but, okay, alright, so we're moving on to G, Town of Upper Marlboro Flag Design Survey. Um, can I apply it, please, please, cause I know we wanna get moving. Um, so we have had eleven responses so far, um, there were kind of two main questions, um, which flag people liked best and which tagline. Um, the tagline results are that eight people preferred A Place To Call Home, and three people preferred A Place To Learn, A Place To Call Home, and A Place To Grow. So A Place To Call Home wins, um, for the flag design. And then, um, with the flag, it looks like two people voted for Flag A and two people voted for Flag B. Um-
Which one's A, which one's A is A Place To Call Home?
You can't, um, there's two different taglines. Um, wow, um, sorry, some of these are not nice, um.
So silly.
I'm sorry, there's, no, I, I, one of them I will not read.
Read it into the record.
I will not read into the record.
Read it into the record.
Anyway, um-
We want it on the record, Sarah.
So. Alright, so they like, um, there, there's a kind of a comment that they like the color, um, they like it to be simpler, um, some people like, someone said they liked C, but no one voted for C, so that's a little odd. Um, so those are the comments, uh, let's see, we did the tagline thing.
Which flag are we going with?
It looks like we're gonna have to decide between the top two, the teal with the yellow or the yellow with the teal.
A. A.
Okay, I got two commissioner votes for A.
I'm not voting.
Sure, what do you like?
Like A with the white instead of the-
Oh, that's right, we were having, we, we had an internal staff discussion.
I mean, I don't particularly like them, but they look, one looks better than the other.
So there's the, this is the internal staff, actually, and I've heard them all kinda go back and forth on it, between the two, A and B, um, which is that the, there's the difference in the cream and the white around it, so they like-
You can put the white over there.
There's a, there's a, the white looks crisper, and then there's the, the white is gonna get dirty and look ugly faster. So those are, that's what I'm hearing, the debate, the internal staff debate on those two colors. So I don't know what you guys think.
Well, we may just have to just get a new flag, then it's gonna be dirty.
Okay. We could do it, do, do we know who washes things at Town Hall?
I'll do it. Darnell?
No. Clerk Hootson, who washes things at Town Hall?
You do.
I do.
America.
So.
I'll wash it, Sarah.
Okay.
I don't need to help you, and I will help you, I usually do.
Alright, so do we consensus to change from white to, or the cream to white, and go with A?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. You got that, Clerk Hootson?
Oh, yes I did, thank you.
So the consensus is Flag A with a white, we are gonna have to officially vote on this, but in order to have the flag in time for Marlboro Day, we have to order it by Friday. So I just wanna make sure we're all just gonna be kind of rubber stamping our vote by the time we get to- Right, it's gonna be put on the other one. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're gonna say A Place To Call Home?
It's gonna be, yeah, this and this over here.
Yep.
Fred?
Yep.
Okay.
So what, what are we doing with this, do we need to sign this?
You're, you talked to, um, Carol about that.
We have to.
So, um, administrat, we're gonna move on to administrative updates. Um, so you talked to her after, um, administrative updates, um, do you guys have any administrative updates?
Oh, Lord.
I mean, I have something I wanna share, but-
Well, we met last Thursday with the-
Oh, we do that, okay. Yeah, yeah, we're good. This is good.
Okay.
Sorry, you have administrative update, Carol, do you have? And Chief, you have? So before I let you guys go, I actually, this is really exciting news, we all got this in email today, but, um, Town of Upper Marlboro won the, um, case against Sasser et al. On the annexation to the west of town, so the annexation of Valley Lane and the area- Out of, out of courts, um, they obviously could appeal to the Supreme Court, but, um, we'll see what, we, right now, we won. Dead. Um, so, go, go ahead.
Um, so as the residents of Spring Branch Drive are aware, um, yesterday, the payment was completed, um, for Spring Branch Drive.
Of course.
However, the, we have to reschedule the seal coding, so everyone that received, uh, the, the two notices on Friday, you will receive another notice, uh, letting you know when the seal coding will take place, because that area of the street will not be able to be used for twenty-four hours. And I believe it affects something around eighteen homes.
And I think those eighty homes know, they're just sit tight.
Dang, so what are they gonna do?
They can outpark a little further down on each side, um-
He can park at my house.
They're gonna walk, they're gonna walk up, they have to walk on each other's lawn, cause if they walk on it, they'll sustain their house. Anyway, it, they, they, they all, I think, they, yeah, they've all got it covered, they'll, they're, they're friendly back there.
Um, I just wanted, just, since I've gotten here, I've just gone over a lot of the processes and procedures, and I just wanna, um, share one that we've accomplished with the business licenses and the board working. It hadn't been working, so business licenses didn't be processed, so that revenue we weren't getting. Um, so that has been worked out, John Hootson did a great job in working on that, and, you know, and, you know, and, and we're establishing like central files, so that there was institutional knowledge. Um, but that is one achievement that I think, um, is worth recognizing, and he did a lot of work on that.
I think he deserves actually a round of applause, the number of hours.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Chief, do you have anything? Okay, alright, we're gonna move on, um, we like to give the public a chance to comment, even though it's a work session on anything general, so if public has any comments, please step forward or raise your hands now. And seeing none, we will move on to the next meeting agenda. So I mentioned the closed session to decide on the Church Street firm, um, so what we've done in the past is we just kinda meet at six-thirty, so that we can talk about it and then vote on it. But I don't know if that works for everyone getting here from work.
On the twenty-eighth, at six-thirty?
Yeah, they're coming at seven, we come at six-thirty, we go into closed session.
I'll probably be on the phone.
So, well, so the, we can meet next week, like, we can have a quick meeting next week at whatever time. I don't know what works, but that's what worked for the last board, so what works for this board?
Instead of the twenty, are we still gonna meet on the twenty-eighth, did you wanna meet one?
Well, we can meet just any day, we meet tomorrow if you want. We can't meet tomorrow.
Okay, so the ones that can't meet, we can still get on the phone.
We can all get on the phone, yeah, we could just do a phone. So, so, we wanna do it at six-thirty?
Yeah, cause I'll be driving in.
So stick with six-thirty. And we'll run either a conference call or, we'll run it like a Zoom, I guess. Um, let me ask a question, um, have you been through the meeting regulations recently? Okay, so I'm gonna go, cause just, um, the, between, um, Clerk Hootson and Administrator Richardson, the meeting rules and regulations require three commissioners to be on video for a meeting. So question, obviously, one, we need three on that, on video to convene the meeting, vote to go into closed session. Once we go into closed session, does the three on video rule apply? Is that a lawyer question, maybe?
Well, meetings I've seen, they haven't stayed, stayed on, like, but they're still, you know, they may turn off the camera, so they're on video with the cameras off, they're not on the phone.
If, so if we were all on video, and only Commissioner Lot and I had our cameras on, I would have stopped the meeting. That's how our rules are, um, until someone else came on camera. So the question is, is that gonna apply into a closed session, we should ask the attorney, maybe?
Nope.
Well, there's gonna be three of us, Sarah, me, you, and Charles, you can be on camera.
I may be driving, but-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna be-
I'll be on camera.
I'm here at six-thirty next Sunday, forty-eight, like, traffic today.
I was in traffic too, but I have this, I have this thing, and I'm gonna drive, so I can send my mom and I'll be on Zoom, so.
Okay, sounds like we'll, we'll be okay, just wanna make sure we be okay. Six-thirty, closed session, we all need Director Bond to join us. So, um, I left my glasses, so Clerk Hootson, you're gonna have to hurry up.
No worries.
Thank you.
Under business, I have A, ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero-one, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget, board vote. B, ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero-two, fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget amendments, board vote. C, ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash zero-three, personnel, board vote. D, Church Street RFP, board vote. E, leave donation policy, board vote. F, Town of Upper Marlboro Flag Design, board vote. And G, Town of Upper Marlboro Three Month Plan, board discussion.
And the, so the three month plan, just to let everyone know what that is, it's kinda tied to the rolling agenda and the fact that we've been really focusing on the budget, we need to start focusing on the charter and the property standards, but we're gonna discuss what else do we wanna start to tackle and how do we want it, uh, um, so that's what that means. Any, you had a question? Is everyone good with this agenda?
Yeah.
Alright, so that's good for next meeting, so it, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
So.
Um, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously, um, Marlboro Day, June eighth, if you have some spending, sign up, if you wanna be in the parade, sign up. If you would like to volunteer, we definitely need volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.